Good evening, welcome to the April 20th Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'd please stand in charge in the presence of the flag. This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access television. First on the agenda is a one-day entertainment license for Rockwell, New England Rides and Amusement, located at Chaz Plaza, May 4th to May 8th. Is the applicant here, Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Do you just want to briefly explain what you plan on doing over there?
It's going to be a family carnival. Rockwell Amusements has been in business over 40 years. It's a family business out of Rhode Island. They're the same company that does the Los Angeles County Fair for the last 35, 40 years. They do Bristol's Fourth of July for the last 30 years. They work for the United States Navy. They do Subfest in Brockton, Deerfield Fair in New Hampshire. And most times when we don't have a festival or a fair to go to, this time of year, we will find a location to set up or play for a nonprofit. And we were able to secure that parking lot with the landlord. And we just wanted to come to your community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
One might be an obvious question. This is all in West Bridgewater, right? There's no part of it that's over the line in Brockton?
No, it's between the first two driveways.
Oh, okay.
Closest to Dollar, Family Dollar.
I see.
So it's on the West Bridgewater side.
Thank you.
Linda, everything has been submitted to me?
Everything is in order, just subject to the final inspections.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the entertainment license?
Make a motion to approve the one-day entertainment license, subject to the final inspections.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Fodden, do you want to lead off with the presentation?
Sure, thank you. I'm looking for your approval for myself to submit to the MSBA potential building project. This was going to be a priority last year, and COVID kind of shot in the way and delayed things a little bit. Due to the aging of our buildings, some of our buildings as well see increased enrollment in our buildings. So, the MSBA submission window is open January 28th through April 28th, excuse me, April 29th. And we will find out if we do submit, we'll find out probably sometime in December unless there's some follow-up questions in between. Due to the nature of this potentially being a consolidation project, which means they would maybe consolidate the two different lower elementary schools, the Spring Street School and Rose L McDonald. We're submitting a statement of interest for both, so they'll be getting information on both of the buildings. The priority would be the Rose L McDonald. You do have to select a priority school, so that one is rated as our priority school. You do have copies of what we are looking to submit. I apologize for what it looks like in that it is an online form and created Google Docs, so I could get a lot of people's input into this, and then we'll be submitting by April 29th. Huge thank you to Julie Hamlin, our Building and Grounds Director, who has a wealth of knowledge on the two buildings, as well as the Principal Keith Goulet, Curriculum Director Deb Yanis, John Collins for Technology, and Tim Pope for our School Resource Office that also helps submit information. This vote does have to be taken by the Board of Selectmen, as well as our school committee. We have scheduled a school committee meeting for next week to do this. We had to select different priority areas, so the priority areas that we selected were: Prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments. We do feel that that is a concern for us down the road with some of the building that's going on in town. Second priority is replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation, decrease energy-related costs in a facility with the aging buildings is certainly a concern. And the other one we selected was replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The buildings are older. They weren't designed for the learning of today, so there's a lot of things that we would like to do differently in these buildings. Our schools still are functioning. They're not anywhere near to be condemned or decrepit, and that's a credit to our maintenance staff and the town for taking care of these valuable buildings. But they're old. The Rose L McDonald is 54 years old, and the Spring Street School is 66 years old. So they are showing their age for sure. There are some structural problems and concerns, and we do feel that worsens over time and also costs the district and town more money as we go year by year. We are lacking, like I said, modern facilities, use of technology in some of these buildings due to some of the configurations. Our overall classroom spaces are smaller than what we would like in a larger newer facility. The ability of breakout spaces, small group spaces, special education spaces, spaces specifically for related services, our OT, PT, speech and language, space for more flexible furniture, like you see at the middle, senior, high school, and space for our specials. All of the classroom spaces have pretty much been used. Some are being taken over as classroom spaces as we get double classes. This submission is just the first step in the process. It's required of all districts who are looking for a project. After this, if approved, like I said, we'd find out sometime around December, there'll be a lot more work to be done with different committees, forming committees, and within the town to get approval votes and so forth. I do know the middle, senior, high school project was applied for in 2007, and then again in 2008, and then in 2009 after the NEAS accreditation came through, and the building was occupied in 2015. So it is quite of a process we go through for this. I did submit to the, you know, what we are submitting. Are there any questions or concerns about that?
So your ideal scenario would be to combine both on the side of the Spring Street?
I think so. I think the one where this could be a feasibility study, we would look at the most ideal spaces in town. It would be ideal to have more of a campus where we have all of our buildings in one location. They may come back and look at combining all the elementary schools going down to two school buildings in the district. A nearby town, Holbrook, has K-12 in one building, so it's certainly an option. And we want to find the most cost-effective, best way to educate our kids.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Fodden?
Do you have any issues with any hazardous materials in either of these schools, such as asbestos?
Not that I'm aware of, nope.
I like the idea, oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Mark, you're going to have to refresh my memory. What, Rose L is grades one through three?
Correct.
Spring Street is?
Pre-K and kindergarten, along with a central office, yeah.
Okay, and would you be looking at a complete tier-down of?
It's a core project, so they could look at renovation and addition, or they might be looking at a new building. So that will be decided more through the MSBA, through the process, after they review the statement of interest.
Okay, I'm just thinking back on the senior, on the high school. One of the big issues that drove up the cost and kept it almost close to parallel between renovation and complete new building was the asbestos.
Right, yeah. There was a lot of site work that needed to be done, and a lot of remediation that needed to be done, you're right. The cost difference wasn't that much.
So this might not be too, too bad. Once you get through this part of the application, what's the timetable for someone to get back to you from the MSBA?
I think they may reach out with questions. I don't think they'll make any final decisions until December.
Okay, until December?
Correct.
And my best guess is you're probably looking at a two- to four-year build-out?
I would think so, at least.
I think this is great. I know when my kids were at that age, where they were in the pre-K, where they were in kindergarten and all of that, it was difficult having them, when they went to the Rose L, trying to get all of the kids to have events together. It was, it's not something you would normally think about, but when it comes to the unity of West Bridgewater and the Wildcat Pride and all of that, I see the need to have the schools near each other to build that unity and that, I don't know, that team spirit. So I love the idea of having them all together. So is there one that they consider first over the other? Is there one that has, of these two submissions, is there one that goes on top?
The Rose L would be the priority just because it's a bigger grade span. And also, it's in an area that is more isolated, and which creates some of its own issues in terms of getting vehicles in and out. If you try to go there, dismissal, try to get a bus out and cars in, it creates somewhat of a safety concern as well. So I think Rose L would be the priority, but it makes sense to limit the number of buildings, both educationally, to combine grade levels, but I think also financially.
Any additional comments or questions? Nope, okay. Having convened in an open meeting on April 20th, 2022, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of West Bridgewater, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 29th, 2022, for the Rose L McDonald Elementary School located at One StepStone Drive, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority areas are: Prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment; replacement, renovation, and/or modernization of school facilities such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a facility; replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, Massachusetts Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any funding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, voted and approved by the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen on April 20th, 2022. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the same thing for the Spring Street. Having convened in an open meeting on April 20th, 2022, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of West Bridgewater, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 29th, 2022, for the Spring Street School located at Two Spring Streets, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority areas are: Prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment; replacement, renovation, modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a facility; replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or the funding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commitments to the town to filing an application for funding the Massachusetts, with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, voted on and approved by the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen on April 20th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Mark, if I could just, since you're here.
Sure.
Is it, would it be possible to get an update on the Saferoot Schools project grant?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I did reach out to the coordinator, Rachel, still going back and forth with some emails, and I know the Howard School principal has set up a time for her to come and view the Howard School, and the other principals will be getting back to her after vacation.
Great, great. I just happened to walk from Spring Street down to Howard Street, and that sidewalk is just, it's a mess.
I've also talked to Chris Antietoletti, and we're working together too. So whatever we can do to help with any funding for sidewalks, we will do.
Great, I did check with them on the complete streets, and our application's already in for that, so that's good. But if we could add on some grant money from Saferoot School, that would be nice.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have the gratification of Jonathan Juan Chilla's, an employee of a firefighter. Thank you. I know he isn't able to be here tonight due to training, but if you'd like to just, I guess, introduce the candidate to us.
Jonathan has been with us since the end of 2019. He came on as a PMT part-time call member. He's achieved his paramedic certification. He's been with us for about two years, and he's about to finish up his Call Fire Academy, which he's attending tonight. That's why he can't be here tonight. He'll be finishing that up at the end of May, I believe May 24th is his graduation. And then, he's been an absolute joy to have as an employee, very committed to the job and the town, in my opinion. He's done everything asked of him, and done some. And it's, in my opinion, I believe it's his turn to transition to a full-time role.
Okay, did you say he was finishing his on-call academy?
Correct, yep.
And then he'll be going to the full-time?
Yeah, probably in about eight months, at least, but uh.
Okay.
They're booking six, eight months now, so he won't be going to a full-time academy until, at least, the new year.
So do you get an exemption for him to work full-time temporarily, or is that how it works?
Yeah, yeah. He'll have his fire one and two certification at the end of this academy, but it doesn't classify under the current collective bargaining agreement as the full-time academy, so he still has to attend that.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
No, congratulations, that's a good.
Is there any motion to ratify his employment as a firefighter?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Please extend our congratulations to us.
I will, I plan on talking to you tonight when it's out, or tomorrow, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. Denise, if you would like to read that.
Celebrate Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one, more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual. Now therefore, we, Anthony J. Henahan Chairman, Meredith L. Anderson Vice Chair, Denise R. Reyes Clerk, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of West Bridgewater, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, as Arbor Day. In the Town of West Bridgewater, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this 20th day of April 2022.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have reorganization, reorganization of the board. It has been common practice that the member in their third year become chair. However, in this case, because of an ongoing matter between this member and the town administrator, I'd ask that I remain as chair.
I'll second.
Or make the motion?
I'll make a motion for Anthony to remain as chair while this pending matter is being resolved.
Is there a second? Or I will second the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
And I will make a motion for Denise Reyes to be vice chair?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
And I will make a motion for Meredith Anderson to be clerk.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Assignment of member duties, we have Serge as signatory, parking clerk, road opening permit signatory. I have no preference on which one. I don't know if anyone else does.
I'd like to remain parking clerk for now. It's been brought to my attention that there are approximately, I think, $13,000 to $14,000 worth of outstanding tickets that haven't been addressed for many, many years. I think what happened is someone new took over at the county level, and I've already started communication with him, so I'd like to see it to resolution.
I have no issue with that.
That's fine.
Okay, is there a motion for Denise to be parking clerk?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have no preference on Serge or road opening, if you do?
No, I have no preference. I was just the road opening permit, so I haven't been Serge's signatory yet.
Okay, is there a motion to me, Meredith, Serge's signatory, and myself road opening?
I'll make a motion to make Meredith the Serge's signatory and Anthony the road opening permit application signatory.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review and vote on recommendations for articles for town meetings, so we went over those last, or last meeting. I don't know if anyone wants to go over them in detail again. I personally am in favor of recommending all the articles presented, but we can go over them if anyone would like.
Can we go over them briefly? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I expected that we were going to go through them, and I didn't review them in detail.
That's absolutely right.
Or that level of detail.
David, do you want to run through them?
I can, sure. So Article 1, Article 2 are annual, which are for annual reports and to do work with Mass Highway. Number 3 is facilities of elected officials, again, annual one. Article 4, you've already approved, which is the budget. Article 5 is an annual warrant article for exemptions to the Board of Processors. Article 6 is to authorize the DPW to use Chapter 90 funds. Article 7, 8, and 9 are all articles for CPA. Article 10 is CPA as well for Esther Drive. Article 11 is CPC, CPA also for the agriculture restriction on Howard Farm. Article 12 will be CPA for War Memorial Park. Article 13 will be CPA for Veterans Committee. Article 14 will be raise and appropriate $100,000 for the treasurer for OPED. Article 15 will be raise and appropriate for $10,000 for police for web task force. Article 16 will be $150,000 from free cash to fund sidewalks. Article 17 is a transfer from the state into our sidewalk fund for $1,389. These funds are from Uber drives and Lyft drives per Mass General Law. It's a fee that's assessed to each one. Article 18 will be a borrowing article, $462,339, to build a new transportation building at the DPW. Article 19 will be for a new plow truck, $231,438 from free cash. Article 20 will be for a new John Deere tractor at the DPW, $81,047 from free cash. Article 21 is police motorcycle purchase from free cash, $20,095. Article number 22 is police for cruiser, $48,990 from free cash. Article 23 is for the fire department to match a potential FEMA grant in the amount of $11,724 from free cash. Article 24 will be the council on aging to purchase a new eight-passenger van, $56,318 from free cash. Article 25 is council on aging to sale coat their parking lot in the amount of $6,500 to be paid for from free cash. Article 26 is from the IT department to upgrade the town's Wi-Fi system in the amount of $133,756 from free cash. Article 27 is IT, upgrade the town server, free cash, $24,500. Article 28, IT, council on aging for new computer workstations in the amount of $8,856 from free cash. Article 29 is for the school department, purchase a new generator at Rose L McDonald School in the amount of $37,900 paid for from free cash. Article 30, new boiler at the middle school, high school, in the amount of $16,390 paid for from free cash. Article 31 is for the school department, the HVAC, new HVAC system at the middle school, high school in the amount of $25,956. Article 32 will be for the water department, this will be paid for from water surplus, $41,905 for a new gate operating machine. Article 33 is the water department for a new tank assessment, altitude valve, North Elm Street, in the amount of $646,100. It will be a borrowing article. Article 34 is the water department, along with 35, the water department, both for pilot studies for new water treatment plants. 34 will be for the Seir Street Norman Ave well, and 35 is for the Manly Street well. The Pilot Street, I'm sorry, the Seir Street one is in the amount of $240,000, and the one at Manly Street is $193,200, again, both borrowing. Article 36 is for the town to establish a town planner position. I put in $125,000 and raise and appropriate. That amount is not necessarily for salary. That will be determined by the Board of Selectmen if you receive funding. Right now, the salary survey is between $95,010, but there'll have to be some accessory items, say for a computer, for example. So we just want to make sure we have funding for that. Article 37 is to amend the personnel bylaw from, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, or motion from the Board of Selectmen. And 38 will be from the planning board to accept a handful of town roads.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments or discussion on individual articles? Or is there a motion to recommend all?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of the annual town meeting warrant?
So we just read what the motions will be. This is, by law, we have to now post the warrant. Basically, it's a notice to the town that on May 9th at 6:00 p.m. we will have a town meeting. You must sign it, and the town clerk will then have the constables post it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 5th and January 19th?
So moved.
I would like to amend the mo, I think it's to amend the motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 5th as printed, but approve the minutes of January 19th with two small changes. One on page 2, the third paragraph from the bottom, it should have said quarterly average is still above the maximum contamination level. And then on page 4, I think we just want to change a word to 2. Linda, was that it?
Uh, yes, I made it just, scraped it up a little bit.
Yeah, it was just a typo.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote on antique license renewals. Has everyone submitted everything that has been required of them?
So Lauren only handles that. She's out today for personal reasons. They have submitted most of their documents, so what I would do is, this is due from May 1st of every year. We have a handful of them, not a lot. So I would just ask you to make it subject to final inspections and in collection of fees.
Okay, is there a motion?
Subject to final inspection and fees, you said?
Yes, please.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote on, vote to award kennel boarding and consulting services contract to JM Pet Resort. Chief Flaherty described this contract during his budget presentation. Is there a motion to approve that contract or award that contract?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a transient vendor application for April sixteenth and April, April seventeenth, May seventh, and May eighth. Is there a motion to approve that application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And vote to accept Francis Boyd's resignation from the Board of Registars.
So moved with a letter of thanks. Is that one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment period. Anyone from the public have anything they would like to say?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So if I could just bring something up, because I did attend the Water Department's meeting last night, and the public's been asking, you know, what's our status as far as the Water Advisory? And why hasn't anything been sent out letting everyone know that you can drink the water now? So what Wayne explained is that once you issue that Water Advisory, there is no mechanism or approval from the DEP to send any type of notice out that says the water's safe or whatever wording you might think would be appropriate. Once the Water Advisory is issued, that's it. However, since November, we've maintained a below twenty level of PFAS. And the, the state's criteria through the DEP for the Advisory was a rolling quarterly average above twenty, so we're below that. And we've had months since November that we've been below the twenty. So as far as whatever people are looking for, for commentary from the Water Department, there is no such notice they can send out. These are the facts. That's all there is to it. These are the facts about the water levels. And now it's, you know, make your own decision. If it was still we were above the levels, then you'd go by the Water Advisory, I guess. Now it's, you make your own decision as to what you want to do. But the, the water resource area they have down at the Sears Street Station is still available for anyone who wants to go to get bottled water. And Wayne actually applied for and received. He did a great job. It was eight thousand dollars for putting the spigot up at the Sears, Sears Street Station, which I thought was pretty good that he did that. So that was it. I just wanted to give everyone that update.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? All right, town administration report.
Sure, so just two, two quick items. One is, is that as I do every single year, now that the motions and the articles have been approved, I will do an informational video for the town next week to let everybody know that we do have an annual town meeting coming up and what the warrant articles are. And also just providing the board an update as to our state aid cherry sheets. Again, it's small print. We receive about seven million dollars or so. We are charged about nine hundred thousand dollars or so. But from the governor's budget to the House Ways and Means, the net difference is we have an increase of eighteen hundred sixty-six dollars. So, and seven million, not a lot, but at least it's an increase. And then the next step will be the Senate will then vote on its budget, and then there'll be a reconciliation process to go to the governor's desk, or late spring and early summer. But at least at this point, we're still looking good on that. Other than that, we've just been working on our budgets and motions and warrant articles, so I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you, David. I would nothing further. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or adjourned?